Our school finance and property tax experts, Latonya Kirk-Carter and Kathy Domenico, will be the ones presenting tonight as they have a wealth of knowledge and experience. Latonya, as you know, was, has been a school administrator for over 30 years, most recently retired as the CBO of Beverly Hills Unified, which will be, is the only basic aid, or was the only basic aid, school district in LA County, giving her a wealth of knowledge about the types of financing that we'll face as a basic aid district once Malibu Unified is established. And Kathy Domenico is our property tax expert on the team, as the principal of Capital Public Finance Group. Kathy has an incredible amount of experience advising school districts throughout the state on public finance, property taxes, and bond funding. So I think it'll be, she'll, this will be in a wonderful presentation. We encourage the council to ask questions. And at the very end, the public will also have an opportunity to ask questions. So please use this as a study session and as an opportunity for all of us really to get smarter about this because this is a really important part of school separation.
So let's jump right into property taxes in California. And as most of you probably know, but I of course want to give a little more detail for those watching in the audience, property taxes are levied on real property. So what is that? Buildings and land. It's also levied on some types of personal property. Think large value equipment, machinery, sometimes even these big copy machines that some of the businesses have. It's levied on aircraft, vessels. And I've, I worked up in Sausalito, and there's a huge portion of their property tax base that comes from houseboats. So those are just things that property taxes are levied on. There are, of course, tax exempted properties, and properties owned by local agencies like the city or the school district. Those are tax exempt. There is an exception there if it's a property owned by a public agency, but it is operating for a private purpose. There are things called possessory interest taxes where those property owners or those operate, those operating that, that building would still pay into the property tax system. So for the most part, the state really doesn't let anybody get away with anything. If it's a publicly owned property but used for a non-public purpose, that would be subject to property taxes in another manner. Prop 13, which we're going to spend a lot of time on tonight, is the governing legislation that affected how property is taxed in California today and since 1978 when it went into effect, well essentially 1979. So Prop 13 limits the real, the general property tax on real property to 1% of assessed value. So what is assessed value? I get this question all the time. What is the difference between assessed value and market value? People say, my home is worth, and I tell them, stop right there. It doesn't matter what your home is worth. It matters what it's assessed at for the purpose of property taxes. And assessed value is set based on the purchase price of the property. And then it increases in one of two ways. Either a year passes and it increases for the lesser of 2%, or the change in the California Consumer Price Index, which has been below 2%, especially recently in the recession, it was below 2% several years. Or it'll increase by the value of an improvement to the property. Let's say you add an addition, add another bedroom or add a swimming pool. It'll increase for the value of that improvement and then inflate each year, each subsequent year for the lesser of 2% or the change in the California Consumer Price Index. And so assessed value is really the key for how your property is taxed. And in just a moment, I'll show you some of the differences between assessed value and market value. That personal property we talked about is taxed based on its market value, and that's really a big job at the assessor's office is to assign a value to those, those properties. If approved by voters or landowners, there's additional property taxes that may be imposed or other levies that may be imposed above that 1% general property tax. But it requires voter approval. And under Prop 13, it actually, if it's, if it's additional taxes, it requires two-thirds approval. Until 2001 came along, and you may have heard of Prop 39, that was actually changed to the California Constitution that allowed for school districts and community college districts only to request voter approval for general obligation bonds with a super majority of 55%. No other agency is able to adopt a tax with less than two-thirds vote besides school districts. And in that sense, it's only for general obligation bonds. In addition, agencies may impose direct levies, either things like service charges for sewer or water. Those are typically based on the cost of service. Could be for assessment districts. You may have seen that landscaping and lighting districts or other type of assessment districts, or things like parcel taxes. And locally, you've got one of those. The school district has a parcel tax. That does, that requires a two-thirds vote. Assessment districts are actually landowner votes. Service charges are based on the cost of service. So those direct levies aren't necessarily in one nice package. They can be a variety of different things. But both the combination of that 1% general property tax and those other levies, either the voter-approved debt or direct levies are what appear on your tax bill and ultimately what you pay in taxes. And in just a couple of minutes, I'm actually going to show you a tax bill. We'll go through that in more detail. So I like to show this map because it really depicts the difference between assessed value and market value. So this map basically shows property taxes paid per $100 of market value, of market value for homes in Los, in this, in a Los Angeles zip code. Property taxes again are based on assessed value, and that typically grows at a slower pace than market value. So you'll see a significant difference in what individual property owners pay in property taxes, even though they live in the same neighborhood. And I'm actually going to pull out a little block here. Can everybody see my laser pointer? Can I just get a couple thumbs up or no, as we can see that? Okay. So we have a block here. This is likely a tract home development. So you have a block of homes here that are relatively built around the same time. You may even have a couple homes on this block that are identical to each other. You can see there's a little dark area here and a really light area here. This dark area pays more than $800 per 100,000 of market value. Same block, just down the street. They pay less than $200 per 100,000 of market value. They get the same public services. They go to the same schools. They live in the same city. They get seen, they receive the same fire benefits. They receive all of the same services. This home pays at least four times what this home pays. That is just to demonstrate the discrepancy and in basically what Prop 13 created because these people down here owned their home longer than these people here. They pay a significantly different amount in property taxes. But this is a question I get regularly in meetings. And people just don't understand the assessed value and frankly, don't understand the impact of imposing property taxes on an assessed value basis and what that means for a community. But when you think about growth in the tax base, it's something else to think about. So if this property down here changes hands, it'll be reassessed at the market value today, which is significantly higher. So there will be an automatic increase in the property tax revenue coming out of that property. So the change in ownership is a significant driver in the change in property tax revenue generated in a tax base. I'm going to go off the laser pointer and go to another sample. So I mentioned we were going to talk about a, oops, excuse me, a property tax bill. I want to focus in a little bit on this property tax bill. I don't expect anybody to read this right now. I'm going to zoom on, in on it in a moment. But LA County actually has a sample property tax bill on their website, and they annotate it. So if anybody really is curious and wants to dig in more about their own tax bill, if you go to the LA County website and actually just do a search for sample property tax bill, this will pop up with a nice annotation of what everything means. But for today, we're just gonna, we're gonna go through a couple key items on here. But I want to focus on kind of what each property owner pays. You see the annotations here with numbers next to various sections. Those all correspond to a description on the county's website. So that's just to give you an idea. Something that's important to pull out on a property tax bill is what they call an assessor's ID number. You may have heard it as an assessor's parcel number or an APN. That is really a key indicator of your parcel. So that's something you may need to look up sometime. That's where you find it. Owner of record. If the name here is different than your name and you are the owner of record, it means there might be an error at the county level. It's important to look at the owner of record. And then down here, there's a dotted line and two, two payment stubs. That's just what they are. They're payment stubs. So if you don't get, pay your property taxes through an impound account with your lender, you actually are responsible for paying your property tax bill on your own. Property taxes are due November 1st and February 1st. Everybody looks at me and says, no, they're not. They're due December 10th and April 10th. Well, they're technically late, December 10th and April 10th, and you'd be charged a fee, basically a fine, if you don't pay it by that point. So for the most part, they're due December 10th or April 10th. But you'll see here on the bill, technically they're due November 1 and February 1. They, the county will divide up the total amount owed in half. Half of it's due, again, December 10th, and the other half's due in, in April. And you just submit that directly to the county. So now I want to focus on the meat of the bill itself. Let's start right here where it talks about the assessed value of the property. So on your property tax bill, it'll actually itemize what your assessed value is based on. This sample tax bill is based on land that has assessed value of about 153,000 and improvements at about 117,000. The sum of that is the total assessed value for the sample property, so $270,000. But this, I can tell that the person that lives in this house is an owner-occupant because they qualified for what's considered a homeowner's exemption. And a homeowner's exemption is a flat $7,000 a year regardless of where you live in the state of California. It is $7,000 and it is simply a deduction from your total assessed value to the taxable value of the property. If this was not an owner-occupant situation, there would not be this exemption and the property would be taxed on the $270,000. So this number here, this taxable value is what is applied to the various tax rates, both the general 1% taxes and any voter-approved bonded indebtedness. It's that number that the tax rates are applied to. And we can see that up here. So I'm kind of bouncing around a little bit, but this is kind of how your count, this is how your county's bill is laid out, where they've got the calculation down below, and then they up above, they show the calculation of how much this particular property owner will pay. So you can see right here, the first line item is the general tax levy for all agencies. And you see the 1% tax rate. So it's simply 1% multiplied by the taxable, taxable value of the property means this property owner pays $2,636 in general property taxes. The bill does not show where this money goes. And we'll talk about that and how that's distributed. But this is the general money that is used for the operations of the local agencies serving this particular property. And it will include school districts, community college districts, if, in a situation, a city, county. So that's the money that's used for operations. Below that, you see the additional levies, the voted, the devoted indebtedness and the direct assessments. So you see this parcel is paying on three different voter-approved bonds. And you see the tax rate here, basically for the school district, they're paying what we say in, in practice as $70 per 100,000 of assessed value. I think you may have heard that with school bonds. But when you look at it here, the tax rate's actually expressed in cents per $100, which is why it looks like this. And then you see the direct assessments. The reason all these phone numbers are here is because direct assessments are actually not managed by the county auditor controller or the county treasure tax collector. They're actually managed by the individual agencies. So if you have a question about one of these charges, they want you to directly call one of those agencies to sort it out. This is where you see, this is a good example because you see the SMM USD, measure R, $385. That's actually their parcel tax. That is the school district parcel tax. And you see some other direct assessments. It is the sum of the general tax, the voted indebtedness, and the direct assessments that goes into that total taxes due amount that is then paid into installments. So that's kind of our, our property tax bill that, that everybody gets. And I know a lot of people that have an impound account aren't familiar, but you are still merit mailed a copy of your property tax bill. And it's something that might just be interesting to look at and see what you're actually being charged. So let's dig into, you know, Prop 13. As you probably are familiar, Prop 13 limited local property taxes. Prior to Prop 13, local agencies really set their own tax rates. Prop 13 directed the state to allocate the property tax so that local government essentially lost control of their tax rates. That's really the crux of what happened. Technically, there's a little more to it, but that's the, the gist of it. Before Prop 13, statewide, the average property tax rate was 2.67%. Again, it's the average. Some communities were higher, some communities were lower. Prop 13 made three primary changes to property taxes. Number one, it changed the method for determining a property's value. We discussed assessed value. It's called assessed value, and it's that assessed value that applies to tax levies. It limited a property's overall tax rate from all local governments serving the property to no more than 1% without voter approval. It directed the state to determine how to allocate property tax revenue from that 1% rate. So Prop 13 is not what actually went through the details though of how that was allocated. A trailer bill to Prop 13 called SB 154 set forth the original way that property taxes were allocated to the various agencies in a prop, post, post Prop 13 world. So SB 154 was an immediate trailer bill that came out in 1978, and it indicated that a local government's share of the property tax was based on the share, not the amount, the share of the property tax going to that local government before Prop 13. Again, so an agency could have been charging a higher amount, but they had to kind of squish everything down into that 1%. To get to that share, they averaged that agency's property tax revenue for three fiscal years from 1975 to 1978 for all local agencies except for schools. The schools percentage was just based on a one-year average. And the main reason for that, if you think about it, and, and we'll talk about this in a little bit more detail later on. So I'm not going to go into all the details here. But in 1972, the revenue limit went into effect, and essentially, school districts were backfilled from the state. So they were not as property tax dependent as other local agencies, since their budget was funded from a combination of property taxes and state aid, just as it is today. So that's why schools were really singled out at that point in time. Statewide, these shares, these relative shares have been frozen since that time. So they have been frozen since the late 70s. That is important. And I give an example because I think it applies, and in Malibu, you'll, you'll really understand this. I work for a lot of fire districts in California. They're small local agencies. And if anybody's familiar with the fire service, back in the late 70s, most of those agencies were volunteer. So those fire districts were not charging a tax rate for substantial salaries and benefits. Additionally, there weren't a lot of criteria set forth for training and some of the requirements for volunteer firefighters that they have today. So the tax rates for a lot of those fire districts were set in the late 70s to be very low. And their share of the property tax revenue that is carried forward since the late 70s, and now we're in 2021, doesn't reflect the actual service and their share of the service that they're providing because now, a lot of those small areas that used to be served by volunteer fire departments are built out, and they have to hire career staffed engine companies, and they have more expensive training requirements and other operational requirements, and think of environmental requirements that they must fulfill, yet they are still stuck with that pre-Prop 13 share of their tax base. And so that's been a pretty big problem with Prop 13. And one of the challenges I see for a lot of those fire districts is they don't have the resources for fire prevention and hiring the staff to actually do the fire prevention activities, let alone the fire, and fire prevention is kind of that weed abatement, making sure that there are fire breaks and all those important things to prevent fires, let alone the resources to actually put out fires. So that's an example that I, I bring up here just because I think it'll resonate in Malibu, but it doesn't just apply to fire districts. It applies to, to other agencies as well. Additionally, since Prop 13 requires that increase in assessed value to be limited to the lesser of 2% or the change in the CCPI, the California Consumer Price Index, it also limits the ongoing revenue stream, and it doesn't allow the revenue stream to keep pace with the operational costs. And in several years, especially in this recent recession, there was actually a decline in value, which resulted in a decline in property taxes. Yet the operational costs of the agencies continued to escalate. So the revenue stream set by Prop 13 honestly doesn't reflect the operational cost of the agencies. And luckily, California has continued to grow, or we may see a significant separation of revenue and expenditures for these agencies where the revenue is simply just not keeping pace. And as a result, we may start seeing more other tax measures like parcel taxes or other things. So now we talk about AB-8. So I mentioned after Prop 13, there were trailer bills to talk about the implementation of, of Prop 13. SB 154 was one. A key one is AB-8 that moved forward in 1979. And AB-8 is an important way, is an important component for how property taxes are allocated moving forward. So we talked about that, what happened with the money from the 70s. But what about how money is allocated moving forward from there? So ABA, AB-8 sets the methodology for how property taxes are allocated from a change in assessed value any, in, in every single year. So basically, local agencies will receive the amount they received in the prior year plus an increment. The increment is its share of growth, whether it's positive growth or negative growth, due to changes in assessed value within its boundaries. So if you have, and I'm going to use Malibu as an example. So if there is a vacant property in Malibu and all of a sudden a business complex goes up, that will have a significant increase in assessed value, and the, the local agency serving that new business will receive the benefit of the change in assessed value. AB-8 specifically provided that the increment, that increase in value accrues only to those jurisdictions where the increase took place. So there isn't a kind of a share of that revenue throughout the county. If there is a, an increase in value in Malibu, that money stays in Malibu for the agency serving where that increase took place. And that is a very important point that I'm going to keep talking about for the next couple of slides. In order to identify that location or that area that these, these changes in assessed value are taking place, AB-8 created these annual tax increment factors, also known as AB-8 factors. And they really were created in their geographic, their geographic area that really helps a county auditor controller allocate that increment, that increase in revenue. A TRA is a specific geographical area comprised of a unique combination of taxing jurisdictions. So I have this little chart on the side that I like to show because a county is going to have its boundaries, a city is going to have its boundaries, school district to have its boundaries, fire, water, sewer, whatever the local agencies are. It's where those agencies all intersect is a TRA. Then you're going to have another mix of local agencies that all intersect over here. That's going to be a different TRA. There are over 11,000 TRAs in Los Angeles County, 11,000 unique tax rate areas in Los Angeles County. So that's just an important piece to say that the whole county is now broken down into 11,000, actually 11,692 segments. And property tax is generated in each of those segments are used for these local agencies to provide service to that segment. These, the factors, these AB-8 factors are what were generated originally under SB 154, and they really remain constant from one year to the next. The only way they change is for a jurisdictional change. So if there's a fire district today, but previously the county was providing that service, when the fire district was formed, it would have taken a share of the county's tax revenue, and it would have moved that over to the new fire district. It doesn't just necessarily take a share of everybody's tax revenue. Usually you look at all the services that are being provided, and the tax revenue that's siphoned off of the new agency is based on the agency that was previously providing the service. If no agency was previously providing the service, then you kind of look to how is it, how is it divided in the pot? Usually that's handled at the LAFCO level. But I gotta say, most of the time, I think that money comes from the counties. Each TRA is composed of different types of jurisdictions, but there can only be one unified school district, or an elementary district and a high school district. It's, you're not going to have two high school districts or two unified districts. It is one type of agency that provides that particular service to a TRA. So that's, that's kind of an important piece of the TRA. I want to give you even more information on these TRAs because I think this is the crux of the conversation that we're going to have later on related to school separation and where the money's coming from. So this is a map that I actually got from, directly from the Board of Equalization. So the Board of Equalization is responsible each year for looking at the existing tax rate areas, obtaining information that they receive by December 1 of each year, and determining whether new tax rate areas are needed, and then providing a geographic map back to the counties that shows where all the individual tax rate areas are located. And what this map is, is a color-coded map of the tax rate areas within Santa Monica-Malibu Unified School District. There are 103 tax rate areas in the school district's boundaries. 11 of them are down here in the Santa Monica area, laser pointer out, down here, and 92 of them are in the Malibu area. And then everybody asks me, is that really going over the ocean? Yes, it's really going over the ocean. Because technically, if there are people living on the boats, they would be responsible, they would be served by Santa Monica-Malibu Unified School District as well. So this light blue tax rate area is one of your largest ones in Malibu. You have some small tax rate areas. You can see some little ones here that maybe only make up a couple parcels, some down here that make up a couple parcels. But overall, you've got 92 tax rate areas in this Malibu side of the school district, and 11 in the Santa Monica side. The, the overlapping taxing agencies are funded from these, whichever tax rate areas they serve. So let's, I'm going to use, I'm going to go back to fire districts. It's kind of a neutral party here. So the fire, you use county fire serves the Malibu area. Santa Monica doesn't have a fire district. So there will be a fire district assigned to serve each individual tax rate area, and they will get a share, that AB-8 share of the 1% general property taxes based on whether they serve this geography or not. So that is kind of the gist of the tax rate area map. And I'm going to go onto one more point on tax rate areas, and then I'm going to stop for some additional questions because I think this might answer some more of the questions. So property tax, this is a sample property tax allocation by tax rate area. And this is a tax rate area in, in, actually in Malibu. It's tax rate area 10-853. And that actually is that nice light blue one I showed on the previous slide. This is the listing that the county of Los Angeles provided for the individual local agencies that are direct, that directly serve the properties within that tax rate area. You see Los Angeles County General, that's the county itself. They have a capital outlay piece, the county library. See, the fire district has the main fire district. And then there's another fire district piece, but it all goes to the same county consolidated fire district. You see flood control, water, vector control, see the city. And then you start getting into a lot of the schools line items. ERAF, that's the money that's essentially taken from all the non-school entities and put into a big pot at the county and used to augment the, the property tax funding for various school districts in the county. A lot of these county school services fund and the children's fund, those go to the county office of education. Santa Monica Community College District has a line item. Here's the school district. And then you see the other ones here. They basically go to the county office of education. This tax allocation factor is the percent of the 1% general property taxes that goes to each of these agencies from this tax rate area. This number varies from one tax, tax rate area to the next. So just because this is the percentage from, from TRA 10-853 does not mean it's the percentage from 10-854. I want to call out the cities line item first, and then I'm going to talk about the school district. You see here, it's about 7%. The city gets about 7% of the general 1% from this tax rate area. And then down here, you see the school district has a separate line item, and they get about 15 and a half percent from this tax rate area. I want to make a very clear point. In separation, the school district separates. No part of the city's property tax share would be diverted to the school district. The school district already has a property tax share, and if those agencies separate, they will maintain that property tax share, and it'll just go to the appropriate agency. So I just want to reiterate that. No part of the city's property tax share will go to the school district. They have their own, and that would continue. So I mentioned the AB-8 is, is allocating the increment. Well, here's the calculation for the increment, and it is simply this tax allocation factor times the increase in assessed value. So you look at the prior year assessed value, see the growth from 2020, from 1920 to 2021, and you see that there's about 259,000 of increments out of the total 69 million in property taxes generated from this particular tax rate area. This is the share of, this is the share that each of these entities gets from the increment, and we add it to the base here. Now, for this tax rate area, the tax allocation factors were exactly the same in 2019-20 as they are today. There could be changes in jurisdiction, and there's kind of a math problem that adjusts what those factors are. But for the purposes of this example, the tax allocation factors were exactly the same the prior year. So we're simply able to multiply the allocation. So we're simply able to multiply the allocation factor by the prior year property tax revenue that was generated and see how much was generated from each tax rate area. It is the sum of these two that equals the total revenue from each tax rate area. So let's look at the city. The city gets about four point eight million of its total property tax revenue from this one particular TRA, and you get on just a little under fifteen million in property tax revenue for twenty twenty-one. So you can see a large portion really comes from this one tax rate area. It's also the case for the school district. The school district gets just under eleven million, ten point seven million from this one tax rate area. They have a total of ninety-four million of property taxes that they were estimating for twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, and this is how much comes from this one tax rate area. So the other piece, of course, and since we're talking about reorganization, it's important to understand how changes in jurisdiction and and really impact property taxes. So there's different ways that a change in jurisdiction can occur. There can be the formation of a new agency, and actually, that's what we're talking about here. So SMM USD would continue to exist. It would just have a name change to Santa Monica USD. A new local agency would be created called Malibu USD. Typically, local government receives the property tax revenue from the tax rate areas that they take over based on the service they're providing. So if they're providing the service of schools, they would take that revenue piece. Let me give another example. I I use, I I like to use fire just because it's, like I said, a little more neutral than some of the other agencies. But let's say that the county had previously been creating, providing fire service, and there was the formation of a new fire district. The fire district wouldn't take all of the county's share of the property tax revenue. It would take a portion of it based on the cost of fire service. And so a portion of the county's share of the AB eight factor would go to that new fire district. So that's in general how the formation of a new agency would occur. Of course, all of that ends up being subject to negotiation when you're talking about agencies that already exist. And boundary changes occur. Sometimes there are boundary changes against cities, schools, special districts. Those agencies affected by the boundary change negotiate. And I'm going to use an example of most cities. So cities typically have their incorporated territory with a sphere of influence with new development coming in that's unincorporated, but they cities annex them in. So before the annexation, the city doesn't have a line item on the TRA chart, on that tax rate area chart. After annexation, they are providing service to those those tax rate areas. They then would receive a share of the property tax revenue, and typically, they negotiate with the county on a tax sharing agreement, how much money the county would transfer to the city in order to provide new services to those to those tax rate areas. There's also dissolution. There are some times when local governments dissolve. I have a couple of examples of healthcare districts that were eventually taken over by the private sector, and so that service was no longer provided by a local government agency. It was now, it's now provided by a private provider that doesn't receive property tax revenue. And one of two things happens. Either those those revenues are redistributed to other local agencies, and you kind of tie it to Health and Human Services, so it usually kind of goes to whoever's providing that type of service, or the residents' property tax rates are simply decreased. I have to tell you, that's not very common. Now, usually it's redistributed to another local government agency providing this service. So again, with separation, we're really talking about the formation of a new agency. We look at the service being provided and the revenue currently generated for that service in the tax rate areas that are receiving the benefit of the service, and in this situation, education, and that revenue stream would move over to the new local government agency. So this is another important piece that does affect the reorganization, I keep doing that, reorganization conversation. And I don't, redevelopment is not something that really applies in Malibu, but it does apply for the school district reorganization. So I do want to spend a few minutes talking about redevelopment because it is very confusing. It is very complicated. And I boiled it down into one slide, but I got to tell you, I've done entire presentations just on redevelopment. So I'm going to try to get this point across as simply as possible, so you have enough information to understand the nuances of the separation agreement. But if you want more information on RDA, I'm happy to keep going. So redevelopment agencies, and here's the first thing everybody says to me, I thought redevelopment agencies were gone. And they are. Redevelopment agencies were dissolved in two thousand twelve. However, their property tax revenue is continues to be used to pay the agencies, the former agencies' debts and obligations. So although redevelopment no longer exists, the money is still there, and it's still being allocated in the exact same way it was before redevelopment was dissolved. So here's kind of what happens, and I'm going to refer you to the little chart on the page. And it's a kind of a simplistic view, but I think it'll give you the idea. When a redevelopment project area was formed, the tax base was frozen at that point in time. So this right here is the the moment that the this sample redevelopment project area was formed. They froze the tax base. This green area is the amount of money that was generated in in property taxes. And this green area continues to go to all of the taxing agencies, like in the previous charts, with those tax rate areas and and allocation based on their share from the nineteen-seventies. However, any increase in value from that time that redevelopment agency was formed until it is terminated, goes to the redevelopment agency, and it's called tax increment. And this tax increment is what is used to support the activities of the redevelopment agency. But because the redevelopment agency is diverting any growth in tax revenue, and these are areas that are developing and growing, and the tax base is getting bigger, agencies are having a hard time serving those areas. So a portion of this money is redistributed back to local agencies that are affected by the redevelopment agency in what's called pass-through payments. And cities that are affected, cities are the agencies, but they receive them, school districts receive pass-through payments, other affected local agencies receive pass-through payments. Those pass-through payments must be used in a school world in a combination of property taxes and capital facilities. So some of the money is property taxes, and some of the money is not. So it just kind of adds a more complicated layer. In addition, since two thousand twelve, when the redevelopment agencies resolved, were dissolved, this pink area wasn't all necessarily needed to pay for the debts and obligations of that redevelopment agency. So the portion that isn't needed is now redistributed back to those other local agencies in what's called residual payments. And for school districts, it's all bundled in in that property tax piece. And so ultimately, a redevelopment agency is formed, all the local agencies get what they always got without any increase, without any benefit of the increase in value. The redevelopment agency benefited from all of the increase in value with a couple of payments given back to those local agencies through what are called pass-through payments or residual payments. And then at some point in time, the redevelopment agency will be dissolved because all of their debts and obligations are paid off. At that point in time, the tax base is reset to whatever the value is, and all of the money is then redistributed to all the affected affected taxing agencies, just like it would be in any other tax rate area. Why is this important? There is a redevelopment agency within Santa Monica. So currently, they're in the midst of this kind of thing, where a portion of the money is going to the redevelopment agency. And then the school district receives their AB eight share of this green area, and they receive some pass-through money and some residual money. The the residual money is all just part of their property tax base, and then some of the pass-through money, though, is above the line. It's considered basically other local funding sources. And in a few moments, Latonya is going to talk to you about other local funding and the importance of other local funding in our proposal. But this is what redevelopment means. In addition, it's important to understand that at some point, that redevelopment agency is going to go away, whether it's in fifteen years, twenty years, five years, whenever those debts are all repaid, it'll actually result in additional funding to the school district. They will no longer get the pass-through payment, they will no longer get the residual payment, but they'll get more property tax money because that won't be diverted to the debts and obligations of the former RDA. And I think you're done listening to me for a little while. And I'm going to pass this over to Latonya, who is really going to be able to explain to you how all this property tax information is important when we're understanding school funding, because unlike the city, the school funding, the the school funding isn't just, hey, here's your property taxes. It's a lot more complicated than that. And then understanding some of the legislation that's occurred in the school funding world is also important, especially as we embark in these negotiations on separation. So Latonya, I'll turn it over to you.
Back in nineteen sixty-eight, there was a lawsuit brought against a California treasurer who was priest, nor priest, by the Serrano family, who were part of LAUSD. But and it highlighted several school districts so that that the disparity in school districts at that time was overwhelming. So Beverly Hills was named in this particular lawsuit because the city, each city would set its tax rate, its property tax rate for its schools, or set its rate that would go to its schools based upon the school's budget. So some schools would have large budgets, and that city would fund it based upon the taxing rate that they would tax within that city. It looked, they knew, it knew long, Serrano priests actually were three separate legislations that ended up equalizing payments for school districts. So that there would be a portion of property taxes and then a portion of state aid. And they, the the legislation commanded that by nineteen eighty, there should be no more than a hundred dollars disparity from either any district. Now, school funding is very complicated. You've heard us talk about it many times. That hundred dollars is lost so in so many other formulas right now that there's no way I could even go back and find it, but that is what the legislation said. Back in nineteen seventy-two is when they established the revenue limits, which is based upon this Serrano priest legislation. It was piggybacking it so that it limited how much money a school district could get from property taxes. And and that went up now to the state of California, and the state of California added to it with its general fund, and then each district was able to get a portion of its its main revenue, actually, the main piece of its revenue from that mix of property taxes and state aid. And so we were talking about it in our little group, and some of the young people only know the 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 last block of this slide, which is local control funding formula, which came in two thousand thirteen. I started at schools in nineteen eighty-six, so I actually still say revenue limit like an old person, because that's what I learned how to calculate back in eighty-six and up until twenty thirteen. In nineteen eighty-eight, which was coming right out of a big depression, I don't know if you all remember, the depression of eighty, well, actually, it was right, it's eighty-six, eighty-seven, eighty-eight was a a state, a state depression. Matter of fact, that was when I realized who the governor was. I think the governor was Dugmesian, I believe, or Wilson, Wilson or Dugmesian, I remember. And but school funding became so unstable because the state budget was unstable, that the the state of California voted for Prop ninety-eight, which set a minimum funding level for schools. Schools, all schools in California now receive approximately forty-one percent of the general fund state budget. Now, you can imagine that that it's supposed to be the minimum funding. As with anything that's minimum, it becomes your maximum. So for mid, for from nineteen eighty-eight to even now, the state gives us approximately forty-one percent and not a penny more to schools because it's now become our maximum. But we are fighting with or competing with hospitals, childcare, jails, prisons, police unions and things like that for that same state general fund dollar. But it does make it so that it did try to make it so that school district funding was not as volatile. Now, as I get, I go into the next slide, I do want to talk about, there is volatility, though, when you're a basic aid, even when you're a regular school district, because what they did to us in two thousand and in the early nineties, when there was state volatility in the budget, and in oh seven, oh eight, oh six, oh seven, oh eight, when they became volatility, they still had to give us the forty-one percent, but they gave us what's called deferrals. I don't know if you, if your school district, you heard them talk about that. That's where they budget the money in the year. They would budget us money in twenty twenty-one, so it looks like on paper, we're getting the forty-one percent, but they deferred the payment of it until twenty twenty-two. So you're really not getting the, but they would be able to count it as their obligation, but you actually didn't get the money. So you've got a lot of school districts that went into financial trouble during that time, and I really want to talk about it again on the next slide. Local control funding formula came about in twenty thirteen, and this was when the the state had rebounded, it was experiencing surpluses in budgets, and they really wanted to change the way that schools were funded. What it has done is also caused, unfortunately, disparities amongst school districts, and I'll tell you why. School districts get a base funding level based upon the type of school district that you are. So if you're a unified school district, you get a base funding level. If you're an elementary school district, you get a base funding level. And if you're a high school district, you get a base funding level. Then on top of that, with the local controlled funding formula, you get add-ons for special populations. So your special populations are low income, foster youth, homeless youth, and you get some additional money for English language learners. Those are called concentration and supplement grant, and that's going to become very important if you ever get, if we, when we are successful in a Malibu Unified School District, because you're going to know, you're going to be, you're going to look at your neighbor, they're looking at us right now, but you're going to be looking at them saying, well, why are they getting so much money more than we are, even in a basic aid situation, but it's because of those special populations. I want to give you an example of Torrance Unified. Torrance Unified is its own school district, but Torrance Unified's local control funding formula, its amount of money it gets from the state, its main source of money is much less than, say, a Lennox Unified, which is a smaller school district, but Lennox has what they call a a higher population of these these special need populations, or what we call unduplicated count. I don't want to get into too much school funding, but when you start looking at it, it's like, okay, you think Torrance is a wealthy district, but it's not. It is, it is not as, it ends up having to end up raising its own money because of this new local control funding formula. And so you've seen this slide from us before, and it talks about basic aid, but what I want to talk about, and it talks about how you become basic aid, that if your mix of funding of property taxes and state funding, LCFF, local control funding, exceeds the limit that this, or exceeds the amount that the state was was going to give you, you get to keep the excess, the excess property taxes. And we're going to talk about that a little bit later in the presentation, but the excess property taxes right now receive to Santa Monica Malibu about four million dollars.
Tony, before you go to the next slide, I want to just bring up one more point, and that is, just to be clear, Santa Monica Malibu Unified School District currently is funded from both this this LCFF funding level, four million dollars of excess taxes, and they receive a substantial piece of the federal programs Latonya is talking about, and they receive other local funding. And I don't want to lose that piece because that other local funding is a significant part of their unrestricted general fund. Relative to other districts, they actually get a significant piece, that's the parcel tax, it's some a joint use, parcel tax, the redevelopment pass-through money. Remember, we talked about some of that's property taxes, but some of it's not. Some of the other local funding is the part that's not property taxes. They also have some agreements with the city of Santa Monica, and they get a portion of the sales tax from Santa Monica. Many of those other local funding sources in separation would be retained by the Santa Monica Unified School District because those revenue sources were generated in Santa Monica. When you translate that on a per-student basis, they're they're basically losing fifteen percent of their student population, but maintaining the revenue stream, which helps kind of their dollar go a little bit further, it increases their per-people funding. So I just didn't want to lose that point as we were talking about where their funding comes from. LCFF is important, their basic aid, their excess taxes, these federal dollars. We can't lose sight of the other local as well. It's it's forty to fifty It's, it's 40 to 50 million, it's substantial. So the revenue taxation code specifically provides that when there is going to be a change in jurisdiction, there is a process that the county assessor and the county auditor go through in order to determine what the property tax amount is for a particular jurisdiction based on the territory they're serving. So we go back to the conversation we had earlier about the TRAs. And you've got a local agency that's providing service to a tax rate area. It, there's one local agency of every type, of any type that provides service to that tax rate area. When that service changes to another agency, there is a math problem that can be done to figure out how much in property taxes goes to that new agency. And the revenue taxation code actually spells that out. Essentially, the assessor provides the county auditor with the tax rate areas that are affected by the change in jurisdiction. The county auditor then does the math problem that figures out how much in property taxes is generated from that service area that's affected by the transfer. Those numbers are provided to the agencies that are changing the jurisdiction. Then there is a negotiation. So typically, if you're providing a service to an agency, to citizens and you change the service and to a different provider, you would just move the money over to the new provider. That's kind of the logical answer. But of course, you need to make sure that that entity that's left behind is made whole and isn't going to suffer. So that as a result of that, there are agreements that are put in place, like tax sharing agreements that you may have heard of. The city in fact has tax sharing agreement where you share in the tax revenue for maybe a period of time to ease in that burden. Or there's other reasons why you may share in the, in the tax increment. For example, I always bring up fire districts. It's a really good example. Oftentimes, they, they serve unincorporated territory. And when cities annex in property, they lose that tax revenue right off the bat, but they still have to provide the exact same amount of service. They can't just reduce firefighters because they're no longer serving that area that's annexed. So there's often 10-year phase in agreements where they have declining revenue over time that they can make up for so that they don't have to just make immediate cuts to their budget. It's that concept that we're using today. So is there a specific formula? Yeah, they, the revenue taxation code spells out what that math is. And then you use that information to either allocate, just separate and allocate the property tax revenue, or you use it for a negotiation. I just want to quickly show you with this jurisdictional change, just what we're talking about. And you all remember this, this table with the TRA factor, this is that sample TRA again. And you see the money that once went to Santa Monica, Malibu would simply be replaced with Malibu. We wouldn't be taking money from the city. The school district line item, the percentage would remain the same. And that 10.7 million remains in place. That's really how it happens. It, it can be that simple. So, so that kind of wraps up that piece of it. I want to turn it back over to Latonya and to go through the proposals. And now that you have this background on property taxes, maybe you'll understand some of the nuances, the proposals and the differences in our arguments and the interpretation of how the school district is interpreting our proposal versus what we're really saying.
And, and, and we did have, just to include, we had a consultants meeting with us and the Santa Monica Malibu consultant, just so we understood some of these things that they've been saying and some of the things we've been saying. So you all voted upon and gave us a ratified and approved for us to give our, our last best final offer that we gave to them in March. It allocated property taxes that are currently distributed to SMMUSD to the new school districts based on the revenue dinner generated in the TRAs served by each school district, the geographical areas. This is the way it's done in every school district that I know of in the state of California. The area, the school boundaries of that school district and the tax rate areas of those school boundaries are how it receives its property taxes. That is what we have put in our proposal. We would provide additional tax revenues from Malibu to Santa Monica in order to fully fund their LCFF amount and keep the state whole. So when we split initially, we would be basic aid. The state would only give us a minimum amount of money, but we would be able to have approximately 31 million or almost $20,000 per student, per student head. I'm just using round figures based upon when that split occurred. The state wouldn't have to be, we would not be any burden to the state. As it stands right now, today, if it happened, Santa Monica would not be basic aid on their own. And so we would have to go in as Malibu to meet the requirement by the state and backfill that amount that would make them basic aid so that the state has no additional burden by the creation of these two new school districts. The, we are, we would allocate funding from Malibu to Santa Monica for up to 10 years if excess property taxes and other local funding declines. We made this offer, this is above and beyond what the state would require us to do. We did this because the Santa Monica, Malibu superintendent expressed that he was concerned that the other local funding would decline and that they would have less money per pupil than they have today. So we added, and he was talking about the sales tax, the partial tax and things like that. So in our offer, we said, we would make sure from Malibu that we would keep you where you at least are today. You, you would not decline based upon the loss of other local funding. And we already know that we're, we're backfilling the state portion. So our, our offer, our last best and final was more generous than even what the state actually would require us to do. Next slide. As Santa Monica, Malibu's concerned with our proposal, they do not believe that there is a way to calculate the property taxes geographically. We don't understand it. We, they, they think it's all one homogeneous, property taxes are all together, there's no way to break them out. And we have the formula to break them out, that there can't be tax rate areas. But in a way, that's disingenuous because RDA is geographical and they're going to keep that and that's property taxes. But in their arguments, they believe that our proposal is flawed because geographically we cannot break out property taxes based upon TRAs. They also feel that since property taxes were based on pre, the initial base back in 2019, 78, 43 years ago, was based upon the total district that somehow they're going to get less than what they deserve because back in 1978, 79, or when Prop 13 was, the ABA factor was calculated, it was one total district. So they don't feel that it's possible to do this. We disagree. There's a lot of things that we just vehemently disagree with that, of course, you could, you can break it out based upon 43 years of growth in tax rate areas. We know where our tax rate areas are. We know what your tax rate areas are. Once they split up geographically, we feel that it can be done. The district's interpretation, this is the one that's going to blow your mind, Mary Grisanti. The district, and district's interpretation of the city proposal is that there will be a significant shortfall that would result in significant budget cuts estimated at approximately 19 million. You've heard this in the media and the speeches, we're going to have to cut programs. If they split off, we're going to have to cut 19 million of programs. Now, I've already told you that most of those programs are funded by us categorical fundings, different pots of money. So I asked them, how are you going to have to cut programs if most of the programs are for the same kids you already have and you're going to keep that money? They showed it to us. In their estimations, they calculated what they would have gotten from us for the next 50 years if we stayed together. So they're looking at our property tax growth after we split. And if we stayed together, they would still be getting approximately $3,000 per student. And that's what they're calculating as the money they're going to lose once we split. And so when I asked them about what programs, how can you be cutting? And we actually went into it because how can you have to cut 19 million in programs when currently today you only receive 4 million in excess property taxes? So if we leave, how does that result in a $19 million hit? Again, they're looking at, so when they talked to us, they told us, it's not programs, it's total budget. We're not going to have to actually cut programs. We feel that if we're not getting all of your money, we're going to have to cut some of our overhead. And that's the $19 million. So the, 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 the major difference is that they want us allocate the property tax based upon enrollment. They want to take the entire property tax increment and, 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 and split it based upon enrollment. But Kathy, go to the next slide because this is very important because we don't think this can be done anyhow. We really don't.
We talked about the TRAs and that every tax rate area is assigned one service provider based on that type of service. So you picture that geographic map of the tax rate areas that I already showed you. We can't have both Santa Monica and Malibu school district on the same TRA chart. They are, it is a geographic map based on the entity that is providing service. You can layer what's called a tax sharing agreement on the top. That's where the money is kind of changes hands. But when you implement that, it needs to be a proposal that can be calculated. It needs to be formulaic that the county can actually do the calculations on. And something that's based on a student enrollment number that varies from one year to the next is going to be quite difficult to, to administer. So we also, as Latonya mentioned, we're concerned that the formula didn't equitably take into consideration that other local funding. So when they're talking about this, this distribution, the, they're, they're wanting all of the future Malibu property tax revenue accounted for in their, their lost money, as well as it's unclear on how the, the other local funding would be, how it's taken into consideration. So those are some of our main concerns of the proposal and just the pure dollars of it. The proposal as set by the district requires about $250 million of Malibu property tax money moving to Santa Monica for the first 10 years and about $4 billion. And that is with a B, not an M, a $4 billion number over 50 years. And frankly, I can't imagine your taxpayers in Malibu being satisfied with their money leaving the community for that, that quantity of money leaving the community for that duration. So, and I'm just going to sum it up real fast, just in essence of time, just some key takeaways that I want to make sure everybody has before we do some public comment is property tax funding for local agencies is derived from the proportion of taxes raised pre Prop 13 plus growth in your own local tax base on that TRA basis. School funding is from a combination of those property taxes and state aid and was before Prop 13. Make that up is a key point. So because the district is now basic aid and only has been since 2018, they do receive excess property taxes in addition to that local control funding. It's about $4 million and there's another about $50 million in other local funding. Essentially, the biggest difference between the city's proposal and the school's district's proposal is related to the allocation of property taxes. The city is proposing more of a geographic proposal. The school district is, is proposing a student enrollment breakdown for their proposal. So those are the key pieces in the various proposals.